I'd like you to go ahead and silence your phones as we begin the meeting. Thank you very much.
So, I think... Professor... Professor... Period.
Good afternoon, everyone. I follow a meeting in order. It's 5:30, 6:00 PM. It's a city council meeting for Tuesday, October 1st. It's bringing him on. And at this time, we're going to have... First, we're going to have a dedication for our other pledged religions. And the dedication will be by whatever... Uh, question.
Thank you, Lord Jesus. In the name of the Lord Jesus Christ, in the name above all names, King of kings and Lord of lords, Father, we come to this place tonight. Thanking you that your Holy Spirit is here, that your spirit of wisdom and counsel and instruction is here, Lord. We proclaim Psalm 133 over the city council, the government, the people, and over the entire town, Lord. Behold how good and how pleasant it is for brethren to dwell together in unity. It is like the precious ointment upon the head that ran down the beard, even Aaron's beard. Aaron was the priest. Then it went down to the skirts of his garments, as the dew of Hermon. That's Mount Hermon, big mountain, famous mountain in Israel. As the dew of Hermon, dew symbolizes refreshing. And as the dew that descended upon the mountains of Zion. For there the Lord commanded the blessings, even life forevermore. So, thank you, Lord, that we're going to work past our differences. We all have different viewpoints. We all have different perspectives. But what we seek to do is to find your word, your will, and your way in all this. And that you'll guide us into a brighter day, a better day in Bogalusa. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the God of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The call is to the end. Council, council mates, would you please turn on the microphones and phones close as you can so everybody can hear. Secretary Ford, could you give a call, please?
Councilman O'Wade?
Yeah.
Councilwoman Temple?
Here.
Councilwoman Taylor? President Darbin?
Here.
Councilwoman Douglas?
Here.
Councilwoman Smith? Councilwoman Kate?
Here.
All right. Thank you, sir. Uh, we've got, next, we've got a group of minutes that will be held over a later date. We are finishing up a large meeting, so we should have that, our next meeting, uh, to be approved for that next meeting. Uh, next, we don't have any recognition awards. Next, we have adoptions of resolutions. Uh, this first resolution, uh, is a honor, a resolution to honor the United Way of Southeast Louisiana on their 100th year anniversary and our, and our commitment to the community. And I'm going to read this. I usually don't read any, but I'm going to go ahead and read this for you. This is under agenda pack. This is a resolution to honor the United Way of Southeast Louisiana on their 100th year anniversary and our commitment to the community. Whereas the United Way of Southeast Louisiana was established in 1924 with a mission to eradicate poverty in the city of Bogalusa. Whereas for a century, the United Way of Southeast Louisiana has been at the forefront of addressing critical issues, creating opportunities, and fostering positive change in our community. And whereas the organization has built lasting partnership with governments, advocates, volunteers, corporate partners, government officials, and nonprofits contributing to the well-being of individuals in families in need. And whereas organizations and internal initiatives, including financial capability programs, volunteer income tax assistance, verum data, CITA, advocacy efforts, and disaster response and recovery have positively impacted our community by empowering individuals addressing systematic issues and providing crucial support during times of crisis. Whereas the United Way of Southeast Louisiana continues to play a vital role in building a stronger and more resilient community as exemplifying the spirit of compassion, collaboration, and service. And whereas 2024 marks the centennial anniversary of the United Way of Southeast Louisiana, a milestone deserving a celebration and recognition. Now therefore, I, Councilman Mark Urban, among my councilmen, do hereby recognize the United Way of Southeast Louisiana's centennial anniversary in our parish. I call upon all residents to join in celebrating this momentous occasion and recognizing the positive impact the United Way of Southeast Louisiana has had in our community. This resolution, uh, has been submitted to a vote. At this time, I'm going to call for a motion.
Motion.
Okay, we got, we got a second, motion and a second. Now hold the discussion, and the United Way is here with you. If you wish to stand up and say something, you wish to have, you, you got, uh, three minutes to talk. You wish to, just say your name and address for the record, please.
Good afternoon, my name is Shawna, and I have the privilege of working as the executive vice president and chief operating officer for the United Way of Southeast Louisiana. Our address is 2401 Canal Street, New Orleans, Louisiana, 70119. I have a sign sheet, but I would like to acknowledge that I have been afforded the unique opportunity to speak to you this evening. Uh, I'm standing in for the president and CEO, Michael Williamsson, who wishes he could be here, but he had a conflict. Distinguished parish president, distinguished members of the council, to all the parish officials, and to you, all of the distinguished and wonderful residents of Bogalusa Parish, I am here today on behalf of our team, our donors, and our partners with a strong sense of gratitude and pride as we celebrate this significant milestone, which is the centennial anniversary of our United Way. I want to say that this centennial tribute that you can honor us with today and to our legacy means the world to our donors, to our countless volunteers, to all of the advocates and the partners who have helped to build our United Way over the years. It's a celebration of collective impact. Impact that we have had on the lives of countless individuals in this parish and throughout our seven parish region. Over the last century, the United Way has been a force for good, leading initiatives to improve the outcomes in quality of education, income, and health for every person everywhere. The dedication of our communities to United Way is the reason more families have stable homes, children receive quality education, and people can now afford a higher quality of life. Our work in Washington Parish over the years would not have been possible were it not for the extraordinary dedication of the staff and volunteers and the municipal leadership that exists in this beautiful community. Therefore, these are the people who have answered the call for help time and again for that our United Way is immensely grateful to each and every one of you. And we thank you for your commitment and your leadership in self, in service to the people in this community. Your commitment and support have been instrumental, to say the least, in our ability to embark on positive change. I'm delighted to be here this evening, and I hope that you know how honored I am to have with me members of my team. Do all stand? I know that many of you were there present when we actually opened our prosperity center here in Bogalusa, where we are on the front lines, working every day with your hardworking citizens to make sure they have the tools they need to not only survive, but to thrive. So, I hope that we will continue to have this strong bond of leadership, and you can rest assured that team of United Way stands ready to serve you for the next 100 years. God bless you all. Thank you.
If there's anybody else who wish to speak about the United Way, turn on the microphone, say your name and address for the record, please. I would be given three minutes. Good afternoon, Mr. Tobias.
Tobias Roberts, level 27, level in January. I'd like to say thank you, United Way, for what took y'all so long. I knew a man by the name of Clear Sense, and he fought for United Way to come to Bogalusa at least 30 years back. And I'm grateful that y'all finally here. I appreciate the work that y'all are doing here for both, in Bogalusa now, and the work that y'all have been across the world and in the country to help people. But yeah, I appreciate y'all, and thank you for coming, and thank you for trying to get me.
With them, amen.
Amen. Anyone else who wants to speak about the United Way and their 100th anniversary? With that being all said, we now have a council discussion on regulation.
I do have a council discussion. Uh, United Way, I have been aware and affiliated with the United Way for the last 20 years or so, when you were over on Avenue F. And, uh, I, I was on the board of the records at one time. And just keep up the good work, and I am so glad, as Mr. Roberts said, that you're back, because you had left, went to Covington. And I am so glad you're back. Keep up the good work, and congratulations on your 100th anniversary.
Thank you so much.
I would just like to say congratulations on your 100th anniversary. And thank you, ladies and all, that y'all here, and hats off to y'all. And may the Lord continue to bless y'all, let y'all thrive.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Well, I also like to thank the United Way, even though I haven't just met some of y'all today, a few of y'all sing around the whole city. Uh, and I wish I was the parish president, but I'm not. Um, council president. But, uh, but I, I will tell you, uh, what made a lasting impact on the citizens of the city of Bogalusa, uh, it takes a whole village. It really does. It takes a lot of work. Uh, I know a lot of people still need help. And, uh, and to, it's a, and people, people need a hand up, not a handout. Do you understand what I'm saying? And that handup really helps. And the United Way is just part of one of, you know, team members. So, I'm going to thank you, and congratulate you, and 100th anniversary. Thank you very much.
Well, and I apologize for this speaking. I know you know it's the president, but you know, we get a little nervous when you have such a proud group.
I didn't think you wanted to record it. You're, you're, yeah, we, we got our...
With them, you're correct.
Yeah.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Anybody else? If they do not, ask for a roll call, please, secretary.
Councilman O'Wade?
Aye.
Councilwoman Temple?
Aye.
President Darbin?
Aye.
Councilwoman Douglas?
Aye.
Councilwoman Smith?
Aye.
Councilwoman Kate?
Aye.
All right, the resolution does pass. And thank you very much, and...
Do you think it might be possible for us to get a picture of you?
Sure, you can, yeah.
Can, can we just stand on your team?
And just...
The whole council? I'm always asked, "Is Mary's amazing?" Perfect stop.
Come on, Mama, where's it?
Mama.
Where's it?
I'll miss it only...
One more, sorry.
One more, one more. That's the bar. I'm only 20 pounds, you know?
All right, one, two, three. One, two, three. One, two. And one more? Two, three.
I'm the one that never did two, don't yell.
Thanks, you guys. I'm giving you a vision, I can... Good morning, thank y'all. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next, we have a resolution to be prepared by Councilwoman Kate.
A resolution, the city of Bogalusa council placing a 12-month moratorium on the construction, installation, and placement of tiny homes within city limits into ex-fully attached buildings that are used for storage. Now, with this resolution, uh, in attending the planning design meeting, there's been many concerns about tiny homes within the city of Bogalusa. However, within the city of Bogalusa, we have to ensure that we have, uh, our laws in place. Planning design has to be in place. So, this is primarily why the 12-month moratorium is issued. It says, "Be resolved, the 12-month, um, moratorium on tiny homes will give the city of Bogalusa time to draft and review design standards, and citizens, and developers may build different types of houses in such smaller space." Now, tiny homes, they're, they're prevalent without, uh, United States. But with Bogalusa being within its certain types of, uh, uh, buildings here, the older buildings, and just, we have to do a plan, a planning stage for tiny homes. And I do have listed here the pros and cons of tiny homes within the city of Bogalusa, or within, say, if an individual chooses, uh, tiny homes. Although we'll not shell all of your, in your, uh, your packet, the pros and cons, the pros of building a tiny home, and the cons of building a tiny home. Tiny, I'm just going to be more into, tiny homes require fewer material to build, and they are typically much less expensive than traditional homes. That is number one. Number two, a, uh, con is that one of the bigger disadvantages of tiny homes is the limited space with only a few hundred square feet in living space. And I must also say, with the tiny homes, and with planning design, and designing these, these tiny homes, we have to consider the facade of the homes. We, you know, they talk about, we have, uh, one house to be pink, one house to be blue. So, that's, that's very, uh, we have to consider that, the facade, how, how we're going to place it. A lot of places have designated areas of tiny homes. Uh, same way, instance, in, uh, in Texas, they have a tiny home village, more or less. So, this is not, this moratorium is going to give us time enough to plan for the future of tiny homes. Thank you. With that being said, if you're in motion, this resolution passes as...
Yes, sir.
All right. At this time, we have public, uh, discussion on this moratorium for tiny homes. Please turn on the microphone, say your name and address for the record, and you will be given four minutes after your name, say your name and address.
General, I'm from, okay, I just have a real quick question. That's not least of six months of planning design, is that?
Well, after consulting with our legal, uh, class, we...
So, so just to be clear, but...
We have recommendations under legal planning advice, just 12 months.
Have to plan, yes. Thank you.
Matt Preston, uh, 641 St. Austin Street. Uh, are we coming up with the total plan on our own? Are we using other cities' models that's already up? We don't have to reinvent the wheel, but we can use comparable estimates from cities around us that have small housing, especially right across that line in Mississippi. You have a whole new village there. And, and there's a mop already made. Why not look at some of those and see how they implement?
Thank you. We're still, still in the planning state. All right. Thank you.
I'm sorry, I'm architect, really.
Hey, girl, I can dirty with you with this. I noticed you offered another tiny home coming out of Southern Drive. Round up 4th, around Southern Drive and 6th? That's a disgrace to even let that come there, to be put in that position for people to be coming out of Southern Drive and see that disgraceful looking check. It's telling you, don't bring anything like that here. If you're going to bring some tiny homes, bring something like the, the Poplar Villa, between Poplar Villa and Interstate 59. They're, they're both are some nice tiny homes. But that idea of Southern Drive, you need to move it. It's a disgrace.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Ms. Jeff, uh, Jeff. Would you say your name and address for the record?
Elaine Kelly, 412, 300, when we came through, cranked it. So, um, I read Ms. Kate's pros and cons. I dealt with tiny homes for about 12 years. And, uh, there is, the State Department Marshal's Office has a bunch of regulations that govern tiny homes and how they're built. And I think a lot of the concern is, they are less expensive than a traditional home. But let me just say this. If you do your research with the different companies that build these tiny homes, you'll find that, like the one I do, state of Louisiana requires 120 mile per hour hurricane clips on the dresses. Okay, ours are 150. You can also put them on a slab, and you can cement them in the ground. There are goods that are treated so they can be very easily moved if someone wants to relocate. And then we have a pack. So, there's a lot of advantages. And Ms. Kate, she said that, um, you know, colors. You talk about, you know, on somebody on a pink house, or a blue house, or what have you. Um, I think that kind of infringes on people's rights, because if you build a traditional house and want to do zebra print, you can do that. So, I don't think that... So, I don't think that, I was really in terms of facades. I understand. But you have to be careful of what you can and can't dictate when people, you know, choose the model for their home, the colors for their home, etc. So, I know the company I'm with, they have, about a year ago, with the Fire Marshal's Office, State of Louisiana, to actually, right now, what we do is we sell shelves. And Ms. Case had written in the ordinance that, you know, there's space limitations. Well, the largest one that we currently do is a sixteen by fifty, which is just a few feet shorter than a single white wall home. And they come, they have come finished out, like I said, it's a shell. So, the stuff is there, ready to do the electricity, floors are floated, so you can just put down whatever flooring you want. Now, we offer additional things that are permitted in Louisiana that you also need to take into consideration. Texas is the only state that I'm aware of that has approved to do a full finished tiny home. And that's what we're striving to do here in Louisiana, because it is affordable. And I have numerous floor plans. I have to disagree with the infringement of privacy under your cons, because the rooms are in place. Plumbing electrical, of course, everything's up to code. So, I just wanted to draw your attention to some of that, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have about that. But these tiny homes are very efficient, they're popular for seniors, they're popular for young couples. I love the idea of a tiny little village. But if somebody owns land, you know, consider that when you are considering all the other. You know, if somebody's got a lot, it would be an absolutely gorgeous little tiny home. And it's very affordable for seniors, for young couples, etc.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Kelly.
Thank you, thank you.
And I'll reserve my comments for council discussion. Next, we have another body else. Please, Mr. Dyson, come to the microphone.
Yeah, Tony Dyson, fourteen ten, Backstreet. I wanna kind of piggyback on what you were saying about those tiny homes. And it is like those trailers. We, we have some kind of, you can't put trailers anywhere. You gotta be in a certain area. And in tiny homes, nobody don't want, you know, you don't pay two hundred, three hundred thousand for houses that come up tiny homes in that area. You know, that, I, I feel like we should have an area for that, just like trailers. And I, I'm not saying that about the tiny homes, I'm not saying anything, you know, to me, there is not. But I think they need to be in an area from it, just like on Sullivan Drive. That, that don't really, that, that, that's ridiculous. That's ridiculous. And 'cause as of today, we started bothering from, from back end and selling it to daddy. We have, you know, the three-room houses and stuff, they started tearing them down. All they started tearing down, they started building up. And I, I, I don't wanna see no tiny homes start, where people start tearing out things and start to make things better. Thank you.
Ms. Dyson, anybody else? Sergeant Mr. Crusady, please say your name and address directly, Sergeant.
Sergeant Crusady, seven sixty-four, last week, two ten room. Gloria, are you the president of the Planning and Zoning?
No, not that I do, it's me.
Who, who is the president?
Is she here?
Cindy Willold?
Yeah.
Is Cindy Willold? She's not here. Okay. Well, I'm hoping that she, Gloria, and everybody else who's in Planning and Zoning, we'd like to have a list of who the people are in Planning and Zoning. And make sure that we know that you're gonna do your research. I know Gloria is good at research. And we appreciate that, Gloria. So, I hope you all do your research and we do this right and start it off right. Thank you.
Any comments, Mr. Crusady? Anyone else to speak? For or against this, or a resolution? I agree on council discussion. I do have to quit council discussion before we go around the table. To address Mr. Bates' concerns, I agree with you, sir. I do think that they need to be conforming, look like houses. I don't believe that, we have, this has been on and off discussion since 2015 to address, I, I addressed all the concerns that Ms. Kelly's been going on here since 2015. I think that, I believe, since I've been on Planning and Zoning before, they need to be some town hall discussions, have public input on that, pros and cons, but also the manufacturers need to show up and show the designs off to ease concerns. Because, and those designs have to follow city protocol. What my vision would be, if tiny homes was to be done, which I, I have nine dogs in this fight, okay? But if tiny homes was to be done, is to make them have a porch on the front of them. I know that's possible with those manufacturers. I think, not I think, I know that tiny homes must be done. But even if you have a shed tonight, we live in hurricane, you never know when a cat porch will show up or a cat on hurricane. So, those are some considerations for safety of our citizens needs to be done. But also aesthetics is what I call it. And that's on Sullivan Drive. It's, it's amazing to me that somebody lived in that. But I would, if I was to live in it, I would like to look like a little mini house or something. And I know people don't have a lot of money, and that's the only reason why the city councils, even, even even, frankly, even, were dating the idea, we'll call it that, what I even say, consider that, just dating the idea. It's gonna take a while to bring in, to focus what needs to be done with planning and zoning. And various ideas need to be brought to the table in planning and zoning. And the manufacturers need to evolve in the planning and zoning discussions. Not a vote or anything, but like a town hall. So, everybody knows what everybody's doing, because it will change the looks and aspects of the neighborhood. And but however, I wanna stress one thing, like we went through in 2012 with manufactured homes. We have a ordinance, believe it or not, some of them, for manufactured homes. Those homes, and I was, I wondered that council meeting a year ago. They need to look like what's in the neighborhood. Not to run down now, but to the conformity of what, what the buildings need to look like in that particular neighborhood. I've been to countless planning and zoning, I would like to spill all my knowledge out here. Not before y'all, I need to speed up counseling, but I just wanted to tell you that I did hear both of those concerns. And other, and also, Mr. Crusady and Mr. Dyson, I heard all of those concerns about that. And y'all have, all of y'all have valid concerns. So, this planning and zoning needs to come up with a, with an idea, and it's not gonna be done in one meeting. It needs to be done in several meetings and build on the idea. And this needs, and we're gonna probably do that too in our thing, to visit some of these tiny home areas, like over there in Poplar Villa. I've seen them on Facebook, I know what they're, y'all talk about. So, anyway, next council discussion.
In that council discussion, yes, I listened to everyone's comments and considered, I considered everyone's comment. And this is one reason why we went from six months to twelve months. One reason why we revised that, because it is a lot of information, designs, folks coming in, and Ms. Kelly, you own a company with tiny homes, is that what you're saying?
I work for a company that manufactures tiny homes.
Okay, okay. Folks such as yourself, and I'm pretty sure Planning and Zoning will have manufacturers to come in as well. But this is only, this is only a moratorium so that designs can get in place, so the planning and zoning can get in place as I said, you know, it was concerned with planning and zoning. And at the last meeting, we talked about a possible moratorium. And this is where we are today. To get everything rolling. Would anyone from Planning and Zoning like this group? I know we're in council discussion. Well, no one, no one's here from Planning and Zoning. But I just have one question. I think Ms. Davis is here. What is your next planning and zoning meeting, Ms. Davis?
We will have, I think it's the second, third, uh, Tuesday. Give me a five thousand dollars in paper on your board.
Yes, and it is open to the public for anyone to come?
Yeah, so just, just, if you can also call the city council office, you may have a, we all, right? Yeah, you will know when it's, I don't remember off the top of my head. So, yeah, we welcome, citizen participation, we have a process with anybody who would consent to use. And if you want to speak, you know, you want to, if you let us know in advance, I'm sure we can come in. This, this can be a good opportunity.
Thank you, thank you. And as far as the pros and cons, there are mainly pros and cons that I listed here. And I mean many, and much more, as it pertains to tiny homes within our community. Thank you.
And I, Ms. Gloria and I started working on resolution for the tiny homes. Just to go back, and Ms. Bates stated about the house on Sullivan Drive. I had the privilege to speak in, but at the time, when the Thames, the council didn't have anything on the books, so therefore, the gentleman that I had the pleasure of meeting and talking to, I actually went out to his home to meet him. He owns the property, and nothing was on the books at that time. So, therefore, he was able to move the, the little tiny house there. Mr. Leonard Thames was helping him. I know one of the requirements that he had to go back in and do some work on the home. He also had to make sure it had a front and back door. So, at the time that house was put there, we didn't have anything on the books that can say yay or nay to him actually having it there. He also shared the reason why he put it there was because he has an elderly family member. His wife passed at the time, he had no other family other than him. And he was, he put the house there so that the elderly male could remain living here in Bogalusa around his habitat, his area, his community. And that was the reason why he actually placed the home there. I did get several calls from constituents that lived in the area that they were told he was gonna put four or five little tiny houses on that piece of land, which I found out that wasn't true. He was just trying to help a family member. I spoke with Councilman Mark Urban, if you saw it, run research on it. We found out that it did need some more requirements, just in case a windstorm or heavy rains and winds would come through. So, we have been actually working on tiny homes. I'm not opposed to them, they are rest costly. Mainly the elderly population will move into a tiny home community. So, I'm not gonna go back and forth with the pros and cons, but yes, I think it needs to be done. But, you know, up to standards, to meet the standards, as well as the homeowner's insurance standards. So, with that being said, I'm not opposed to anyone that may be interested in a tiny home. The cost of living is getting higher. As y'all know, when you go buy groceries at that time, so just think about the maintenance of a home. So, this is the reason why we bring this resolution to the table.
Okay, any other council discussion? Alright, if any no council discussion, may I have all the call please?
Councilwoman Orey?
Aye.
Councilwoman Temple?
Aye.
Does it, uh?
Aye.
Councilwoman Douglas?
Aye.
Councilwoman Smith?
Aye.
Councilwoman Case?
Aye.
Okay, thank you very much. Resolution passes. Next, we have introduction of ordinances. This is the ordinance to be read by, I mean, this is only your introduction. This will be a public discussion in our October fifteenth council meeting. Our ordinance of the Bogalusa, the City of Bogalusa, to amend Article eighty-three of the City Code regarding general parade and migrots in its entirety. This in obvious fees will be discussed at our next council meeting. Next, we have an ordinance to be read by Councilwoman Case.
Yes. An ordinance upon review. An ordinance upon review of the American Rescue Plan dated September, it says September thirteen, the Plan of Rescue, and I will explain, September twenty-third, twenty twenty-four, authorizing the mayor of City of Bogalusa to execute an agreement for professional services with retail strategies LLC in to provide certain professional consulting services regarding retail retail academy and related activities. And this will be discussed at our next, at our next council meeting. But I would like to say, council, you do have a a handout from the first thing for retail strategies, which indicates the amount of funds in our, in our reach, in our op-ponds. So, I handed that out to everyone. And Mr. Bates did update that seventeen, that September seventeenth op-pond detail report, which reflects the amount that's actually in the op-pond, which supports retail strategy. And also, I will be handing out to the council the usage of op-ponds. I'll begin it to you, I had a technical issue with my pen today. But I will begin with you, the usage of op-ponds as it was discussed on our finance meeting this past Thursday. Thanks.
Alright, we also got another one to be read by Councilwoman Case. This is about financials.
Yes. An ordinance to provide either print or electronic financial statements resources to the Bogalusa City Council Finance Committee on a monthly basis. And this will just be discussed at our next council meeting. Once again, you should have the handout from the legislation auditor. It talks about agreed upon procedures as it relates to financial statements. Thank you.
If you have a copy of, we were busy, busy updating, yes, in the process of updating our agenda. And something was pulled by our city attorney. If you have a copy referencing the part, please, please ignore it, we're not gonna discuss that. Our interview's at this time in this day and age. Moving along, we have the next ordinance to be read by Councilwoman Case.
Yes. An emergency ordinance to demolish of two twelve Redmond Street due to safety matters. Due to safety matters. And we'll talk about this a little bit more at our next council meeting. There has been a new, um...
It's emergency.
Yes. Yes, it is an emergency ordinance. Thank you, thank you. It's an emergency ordinance, and it has been approved by Attorney May. But I would like to say that according to Louisiana laws, by statute thirty-three, thirty-three, forty-seven, forty-one, condemnation of billions of all parishes and municipalities, which it was, it was happened last year. And it does give a parish or municipality, if a, if a structure is unsafe, they do, that they can demolish or condemn. they do, that they can demolish or condemn that building. This particular building is already, uh, contaminated, but, uh, we need to definitely, uh, demolish that building. Go over on Redmond Street to see the house about to fall out of the street. It's really amazing. So, uh, I appreciate that. We will talk about it more. Appreciate the merit, moving on that.
Card motion.
Yes, I do make motion.
We got a motion, said, uh, Councilwoman Douglas. All right, now, public discussion, this is being treated as a emergency ordinance. Uh, under city charter, we do have to have all emergency ordinances approved by the mayor and the city attorneys, which that did happen by Attorney, uh, Attorney, City Attorney Kevin May. Would you please come to the microphone, say your name and address for record? Um, this is only to demolish the heavily leaning and safety issues. Consider a safety issue per charter, two twelve Redmond Street.
I tell you, Mrs. Gladys, she's fifteen loads of her weight. Is that the house that's coming down the hill that's been made?
Yes, the blind.
Yeah. It's coming right down the hill on two, uh, uh, coming towards, I mean, also street. Yeah, I appreciate y'all, please hurry up. This been there for like fifteen, twenty years, rock and leaning like that. And I appreciate it, it's an emergency on that, thank you.
Thank you. Hey, we got two of the dogs.
Hallelujah.
The next two of their, two of their.
I had, I had, and it like soared down and it, it, oh, flowers beating up.
We got two of them.
I appreciate y'all.
Got that little wild ass bison with the warrior.
Okay, I truly appreciate you. Oh, thank you, baby, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else to speak about two twelve Redmond Street? All right, we ain't done, next council discussion?
Uh, the only council discussion, I just wanted, uh, to confirm. And, uh, I had, I had spoken with, uh, planners on it about the, the permit for demolishing. And for what I was saying, and I did speak with the mayor on it, we have our own machinery, uh, to take this house down. So I'm very appreciative of that, that we have our machinery in place. I'm not sure when, uh, I know last year I talked to Mr., uh, Mr. Patterson a bit on it. And he had indicated we're going to get to the house, we're going to get to the house. So, uh, I'm, I'm very thankful to you, you know, because it is maybe had.
I would also like to say and say, uh, two twelve Redmond Street have been in bad shape a long time. But you cannot, uh, overpower someone that is still paying the taxes. This is why it has taken so long because these people will still pay them. Now, this house is no loan. It, it cannot, it is broke and dead. This house has broken and had. I was with this, uh, Angela Axe. She and I, we visited this property a couple of days ago. And this house does need to be torn down. And so it says emergency. And I agree with this emergency. I know the street is going to have to be blocked out for a while or up for them to do this because this house is so close to the street. It's not bad, it's close to the street. And I don't want this house to fall when someone's walking through there.
Now, question before we move forward. Did they go through condemnation, right?
Yes, yes, it did. It is condemned, and I would just like to read this from law, twenty-twenty-three law. The governing authority of any parish or municipality may condemn and cause to be demolished or removed any building or structure within the parish or municipality when it is in dilapidated, dilapidated and dangerous condition, which endangers the public welfare. And I'm just really glad that it passed this law. Thanks to our legislators, it passed this law last year.
Okay, go on, please.
Councilwoman O'Reilly.
Aye.
Councilwoman Temple.
Aye.
President Douglas.
Aye.
Councilwoman Douglas.
Aye.
Councilwoman Smith.
Aye.
Councilwoman Kate.
Aye.
All right, an emergency ordinance passes. Please be aware to the public that this ordinance will be back on our agenda next, uh, next October fifteenth. Per our charter to change over from regular ordinance and it will be another public hearing at that time. Thank you very much. All right, this concludes our business portion. Thank you, um, Mr. Dever. Um, we appreciate Mr. Dever Branch going in tonight for our city attorney. Uh, at this time, we have, uh, hold participation. Miss, Miss Dever Corseti. Will now, Miss Corseti, if you're coming to the microphone, we have two minutes, please say your name and address for the record.
I'm Dever Corseti, seventy-six, four Marshall Richardson Road in Lululela. Um, I just wanted to thank, I guess, Lululela Works for fixing those big hot hoes on the Marshall Richardson Road. So thank you very much. Um, there is one, I'm not sure what the street name is. I was coming from Belle Paws towards Funeral Home, the first block, when you turn, like you know where Belle Paws is on Avenue F? If you're going north on Avenue F, the first road, you have the Belle Paws. Go down that road, you feel like you're going to lose the rear end of your car. There's something that just makes your car boom. It was scary. Anyway, I just thought I'd mention that and I mostly want to thank it's Mark for it. And also thank Mark for, um, running this, um, council meeting so early and fast.
Thank you. Thank you, Miss Corseti. All right, next we have Miss Abet Preston. Miss Preston. Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Please say your name and address for the record.
That, uh, seventy-six, forty-one, St. Paul's Station. Um, I, I, I'm really glad we're moving on to emergency ordinance. Ordinance to get this building taken care of. My concern though is still some simple things. I do, uh, agree with Mr. Preston. The meetings tend to, uh, run a little bit smoother. I'm remark, but let's not say anything negative. Uh, my only thing is to, uh, prevent it. Sorry. My only thing to, uh, the council and the president is that we, as the citizens, we, we show up here like a half an hour early sometimes before council. All we need is that our passion show too. Because we're under the understanding that this is your appointed place of duty every first and third Tuesday of the month for a certain time. And it's, it's not always a problem. I understand, we have to live up sometimes. We have privacy sometimes, but it does not need to become a pattern. And I, I've seen a pattern in the last three, and I'm just bringing it to the council's attention. And, um, that's the only thing, but I'm really, really interested to see how the reception is going to turn out on the tiny homes. And see how well we can serve that. Because there are some really good people up the road from us. And we can even do it for senior citizens, uh, if it's over fifty-five. You can live in there and things of that nature to cut down on their costs. Just some things to look at. But other than that, yeah, I, I do agree that the meetings have run a little bit better. So, let's hear it.
Thank you, Miss Preston. Next, we got, Mr. Geraldine Robinson?
Yes.
Are you present or you wish to speak? Good afternoon, Miss Robinson, please say your name and address for the record.
Geraldine Robinson, eighteen, forty-three, Last Street. Uh, I'm here concerning the, uh, Martin Bar Parade two thousand and twenty-five. And I'm under the impression that, um, each broker would have to pay, uh, additional interest fee. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am. Uh, that would be up to, uh, hang on. That would be up to public discussion in our next council meeting, October fifteenth. But that is correct. Uh, yes, it will be a two hundred and fifty dollars, uh, for each tractor pull flood. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so it'll be up to discussion at the next meeting?
Yes, ma'am. Your next meeting, you will definitely, all the public, so whoever wishes to speak for or against that, uh, ordinance, uh, that will be up for discussion at that time. You're welcome to discuss it, ma'am. I pause your time because I respond to you. Whenever I respond, if one of us respond, I do pause your time. So the thing is that it will be up for a public discussion. Uh, but you're welcome to say anything you wish about it. It's just time for discussion.
Well, uh, I'm not going to prolong it, but I do wish to, to, uh, discuss my opinion of it. The two hundred and fifty dollars additional fee, I, I don't approve of it. I have approached, um, in the Mecca Parade and we pay, uh, money for a tractor driver to pull our throat and, um, to pay an additional two hundred and fifty dollars. I don't agree with that. I think that that's, um, I'm there. Um, that's my opinion of it. And, um, I will discuss it further at the next meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. And, and let me say one thing before we continue on the public discussion. That will be coming up for discussion at our October fifteenth meeting. Make sure you read over the ordinance and compare with all the fees and all that. And this is being proposed by the Lululela Police Department, which has final authority to issue all licenses for the rights. So that's what's, you know, it's being presented to us. I will continue on with public discussion at this time. Um, Miss Ellie Carter. Seventy-four. Please say your name and address for the record.
Ellen Carter, fourteen oh six City Avenue. Um, I've come to meetings and I've sat here and I heard about people's problems with the dogs and the dog parks and the mud floes and the tiny homes. But I've never heard y'all say anything about the children of Lululela. I have another friend, son, thirteen years old, got hit by a car last Saturday. Broke his arm, thrown him up in the air, broke his arm. We gonna have to do something with this. No, this was on child mole shit. But we gonna have to do something with these cars that recognize these childrens. And we don't have child mole, so they got to ride it by somehow. We don't have no place for them to go. So something to do, y'all. Everything's been discussed, but everything else but that problem. I haven't got the soul children at place sign yet still. I guess y'all still working on that. But it used to be a sign there, but it's gone. On the corner of Hickory and South Dolphin, the sign's on, I don't know where I'm to.
Ellen, if they're flying, they're not paying any attention.
They not paying attention to the stop signs, they don't see them, so they not paying attention to that sign. But they might pay attention to something for it, it gets too bad.
Right, I'm sorry about your group.
Cause the first one was six years old and they had to, uh, shrink. And he was not in the road, but this thirteen year old, he, I, I, he was in the road, I know it was. But they could have stopped him and said something.
That sign has been barred. And I'm looking at my business to check and make sure it's here and put. Because it has been barred.
So if y'all want to discuss that in the next meeting, I'll put an ordinance up for that, something.
Well, they are putting out signs, um, Kate, we have, uh,
I'm talking about these feed homes.
Yes, that will be something that we'll have to,
Not the homes, I mean the homes.
The homes, which I know Mr. Robinson showed you the difference, and you explained it.
No, I found out the difference.
So I, I appreciate you for elaborating and explaining the difference to me. Um, Ms. Kate, you have some signs that you put out. I know on Forestry there are coming out.
Yes, I see y'all got the dog park, we need a children park, something.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, I, I do, I, I condone some of your, uh, shit where it's chow. Ellen, the dog here, one on South Dolphin and child mole.
No, um, Hickory, on Hickory, on Hickory and Roar.
Oh, child mole. Good luck to you.
Yes, I know you've heard, you've heard many folks tonight. I'm not going to take up your time because I know this is your time to speak. Uh, say that we're following up on it, but I do follow up on it. We had the same problem, uh, on Forestry, uh, down from the, uh, General Dollar Store. And had gotten in touch with the, uh, the, uh, the police chief, Chief Smith, as well as our sign man. And their signs were, were not, they had ordered the sign as she had said, so, posted on Forestry because they're speeding up Forestry, oh, it is,
But y'all know two, two, that's on Forestry.
Right, we get some fifteen miles per hour, um, signs down there as well as children play signs in that, in that area. But I, I will follow up as well.
But I hope they see what's going on.
In fact, I think, uh, I think that I, I had put a work order when I visited your area before, me and another person. I would see exactly what happened to that work order, that's a couple of months ago. You know, so I will, I will check to see what happened to that work order.
So would y'all have anything about the speed homes or y'all got a goal on it or?
With the speed homes,
Like the paper, um, but by my eyes, we have to.
Yes, with the speed homes, as I said before, when I talked to you a couple of months ago, I had spoken with, uh, uh, it was Chief Knight at the time, at the time on it. But I will get with Chief Smith again on the homes.
Yes, ma'am. Ma'am, what you dealing with, and I observe as, as a citizen, we're dealing with a fast and furious mentality of these young people. It's mostly, uh, it's not all young people mostly. And, uh, you know, the California role. The police are overwhelming, and I understand, it's just, uh, it's hard to get a direct answer for that. But there's others that, you know, uh, just catch them.
Well, we could swing down some, maybe to help.
It's definitely wrong, as it is on my street.
I doubt I'm going to get a cheer of, of something, I don't know. Cause anybody that's, you know, that, you know, that, that concerned about it. But I have two, two grown girls and five grandchildren. And I hope to keep them.
Police catch them, they catch them, they give them.
Cause I might have to sit on my porch and start like tagging down.
Right.
Yeah, so.
Police got help, they got a call. Uh, we're going to need more help, you know, so they let the police know we need people more.
Sometimes they come who they don't, we have a tag on their car.
Which is, I'm telling you, I'm, I'm sure, but it's like, I agree.
Thank you, Ms. Catherine. Thank you. Thank you, girl.
Um, how is, how many an asked question? Since David is out of the, out of, but who is handling the signs here? Is that Paul?
Well, ordering signs, uh, grassy, ordering signs out for the trigger plant and the, uh, lift station and, uh, all the wells, uh, to get some more up to date, like Covington and such. So, uh, I just thought, just to council worry to y'all, let me y'all signs we exactly need and heard. And, um, I'll get on that.
But you got, you got a stop sign for the bathroom.
Well, you're just gonna, just either email me or send it to me in a text, otherwise, you know, I, I just.
I mean, do we need to have a people box or just send it to you?
And then also I would like to ask that, um, I have a speaking to Mr. Paul that works along with Mr. David, okay? And he has also recommended. And he has also recommended public works on those signs. I know Mr. Morris was very instrumental.
Yes, on yesterday.
In the sign thing, for me.
We'll move on to the public discussion. Thank you all.
I look forward to it.
All right, thanks. We got, okay. Next, we have Miss Debbie McCloud. Good evening, Miss McCloud. Please state your name and address for the record.
Debbie, fourteen, this is Debbie. Couple of things. The first point is that just briefly noted, Debbie, that please have to approve all demonstrations. And if you look at the First Amendment and rule in the state, if it's a demonstration and they do not disrupt the road, then you cannot require a permit. So, taking a look at that, and then you can give it your materials or whatever to ensure that that's accurate. Second thing is about the signs. Like, maybe seventy-nine years ago, they took away all the stop signs. They took away stop signs on my street and a lot of districts. And I think that what we're seeing is a direct consequence of them deciding to allow people to go faster down thoroughfares. If they hadn't done it by an hour or two, they would have been back to stop signs on streets. I know that that's also a issue on my street, people whizzed down there because there's no stop signs. So, just as a thought, that that's probably where we've seen this increasing problem. And then, the last one is about the planning zone. We did recommend a six-month moratorium, and I'd really like you to think, I mean, if we can't get it done in six months, we certainly could have renewed it for another six months. But when you make it here, then you just delay the whole process to slow it down. And we have a lot, we have a reason. We go, we need to work at it as fast. We go, we need to work as hard. You know, so I'm kind of disappointed that you didn't take our recommendation and decided to go and get what we recommended. And maybe, you know, we certainly could have renewed it if we didn't get done what we needed to do, or it wasn't satisfactory in itself, because obviously, we have the last rule on that. So, I'm disappointed about that. But reminder, the last date of registration in person is October seventh. When I say register online, it's November, it's October fifteenth. So, mark on the calendars. Thank you.
Thank you, Miss McCloud. Next, we have Mr. Cookburg. Mr. Burger, if you come to my call, please state your name and address for the record. You will have a box in two minutes.
Cookburg, thirteen zero three three Chautauqua Road, Bogalusa. The only thing I have is, I have a letter that I'd like to hand to each council on behalf of Meta, in reference to the ordinance that you have in addition. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. So, the public understands what's being, what's being here. They're just airing a letter of, or support or opposition. Anybody can give that to you and stand up and speak and then have a seat. All right? Thank you, Mr. Burger. Appreciate it. Any other? Okay. All right, now. All right, next. We got Mr. Tobias Roberts. Let me get this.
Can you read the letter out?
Well, if.
If it's in blue, will the person standing here speak?
I don't care. We read.
We could, I mean, I don't, who knows? Yeah, since I see. All right, if I read it, it's on the internet, so I'll post it for record. All right?
Wait, which one?
At this time, it says to the mayor. All right, can I have one? To the mayor of Bogalusa, Bogalusa City Council, both of us have addressed in the letter. From Mecca, Captain Cookburg. Imagine City Harmonious Association was formed in nineteen eighty-one by a small group of businessmen to help a downtown area of the city of Bogalusa attract people and introduce them to Bogalusa. The first parade, the King of Virchery's Young, with King Virchery's Young and Queen Dixie Blacksmith as royalty, consisting of six truck pull floats in short of a half a century. In just a half a century, Mecca will celebrate its forty-fifth anniversary year. The parade thing is Mecca's Royal Affair. And in year forty-four, the organization was presenting forty-five tractor pull floats to thousands of viewers, consisting of the locals and out-of-town visitors who were in Bogalusa to enjoy my roster festivities. The goal to continue to make the Mecca Parade bigger and better, but the assistance of the city of Bogalusa is needed to accomplish this mission. The Mecca Parade consists of sixteen Mecca floats, sixteen lakes, root floats, thirteen civic entry floats. Mecca is the only financial responsibility for the sixteen Mecca floats. Two-thirds of the parade is made up of lakes, roots, and civic roots. Each of these roots has to balance their individual floats. They cost, include decorating, purchase of throws, costumes, insurance, tractor, and driver's fee, parade interest fees, and now possibly a fee to the city, which could possibly have a negative impact, negative effect, on the number of groups and floats that will continue to participate. Mecca asks that you consider the sales tax revenues that have generated during the carnival season, which began with an outset of the forty-fifth king and queen and royal lord on January third, two thousand and twenty-five, and ends with a parade on March first, two thousand and twenty-five. Thank you for your support. Signed, Captain Cookburg. At this time, Secretary Ford, we're airing this into a record. And all the reason why I announced that, anytime that somebody's handing us, it has to be announced what it is and a public meeting. Okay, that's not him, that's not him to stay off, but it is. I want to make sure everything, what y'all know what we're doing. But thank you very much. Now, I will discuss it next council meeting. All right, so, and y'all can discuss that next. Move along. We have, we have Mr. Tobias Roberts. It's the next one in line. Mr. Roberts, please state your name and address for the record.
Tobias Roberts, eleven twenty-seven Avenue, Chateau. There'll be a lot of discussion going on in these meetings, but I like to speak on issues that's plaguing citizens in Bogalusa. And we got sewer problems in Bogalusa that nobody talks about. We got sewer backing up the people houses. We got Avenue B, the complex out there. I went out there myself, me and my little girl, walking through the, the field out there, and I just looked there, and it didn't, it didn't look right. Didn't smell right. We got sewers all around that park out there where these kids play at. We got a manhole out there in the middle of the soccer field that I been told that it be overflowing with sewer out there in that field. Has it been true? We got sewer spilling on our highways.
Mr. Tobias, incorrect.
No, it's, it's very correct. I said it myself.
There is no sewer spilling in Avenue B. There is no sewer on the highways. The fruit stand and over there by the pump, that's water that's bound, has been running up to eighteen roads. All this information that they put on Facebook is propaganda. It's incorrect. I can give you the facts. You just may not.
There's no spilling. I'm looking at it. It got sludge in. Our digits shouldn't have sewage. A digit's not for sewer. A digit's for fresh water. We got sewage in our waterways, in our canals, in this, going in this Bogalusa street. We got pumping stations that's not working correctly. How many pumps have people have been burned up since we've been direct? How many of them are out there?
Let me answer. We got sixty-three stations. Each station has pumps, and they periodically go out and they get replaced. So, how many have burned up? They burn up a lot. We've got two stations, Station Three and Fourteen, that are on a manual pump, and we're getting grants to replace them. But there's no sewer going in or out. There's a DQ, Wildlife Refuge, and everybody else. There's nothing on the ground, nowhere. That's, that's propaganda.
Absolutely not true.
You got DQ sitting in here with it tonight.
That's a lie. That's not true. I've seen it myself. I've visited these places myself. So, before y'all start bringing businesses in here, you see what I'm saying? Let's clean up the city first. Let's get our pumping stations up the park. Let's, let's do the things that affected the people. Because everything I have told you today, ain't nobody told me. I went and seen it just for myself. Get it fixed.
All right, thank you, Mr..
Mr. Pully works directly.
Thank you, Mr. Roberts.
I'd like to continue to respond to that, because we, we do have problems with our social system. We do. And we're going to address that further. We're just gonna neuter the plant manager to the level four license. She's very competent. She's gonna guide us further. But again, I will redirect it. I've talked to DQ. I've discussed all these things. We've been reported on multiple times, and when they come and they look, there's nothing there. There's nothing. Other than, the only thing that Mr. Roberts said at this parade, our sewer system is antiquated. We need to fix it, and we need to get grants to do it. And our mayor went to DC. He's got some rats coming down the block for that. We've got a new treatment for that and a future spot of our sewer system. But other than this scare tactic, and there's food all over the ground, that's ridiculous. All I'm saying, take the advice for the people who know what they know. That's all I'm saying. I listen to the people anyway, so.
Thank you. For two minutes, it's up. I'm sorry.
Please be a topic.
I understand that. And let me tell you something, also the council, all of us council people, we immediately report it through what we call our I work, works queue system, and we rank it to their attention, so it's documented. Anytime we see things going on in the neighborhoods, we do that, also on top of that. And a little, two minutes is up.
I understand. Respect and let me speak. If it's documented, it don't do it no good to be documented. We need to fix.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Right. Mr. Markhamson, please. Mr. Richard Corset, please. Please state your name and address for the record for about two minutes.
Richard Corset, seven sixty-four, Mashup Ridge. I just want to say that our old buddy guy, my buddy too, Angelo Pepe. He came through a lot of city council meetings. He's sat over here for a long time. I think he wore a Benjou. So, anyway, just saying goodbye and hello and sorry to you, what happened. And just keep working and see how things go. That's all we can do. Thank y'all.
Next, we have Miss Lee Kelly. Miss Kelly, please state your name and, please state your name and address for the record. You have two minutes after you state your name and address.
Lee Kelly, forty-two three nine, Marvin McCain Road, Frank Newton. The first thing is I wanted to just make suggestions about. I sat there, read the ordinance that you're gonna put a discussion on at the next meeting, and perhaps it would be in the council's testing trust if you had something that you could give people attached to the agenda at the next meeting that gives an overview of what it actually costs the PD during Mardi Gras. And second to that, maybe, and not just the month, but the sales tax revenue that's actually generated for those days. Okay, so that was the first thing. The second thing is, isn't ordinance in place that governs commercial landloaves? That their buildings have to be inspected and up to code prior to putting a tenant in there?
You're asking, of course, they share all of us.
I'm asking a question. There is an ordinance.
I think they are all of them. I think we could do all of that to die in fourteen.
So, it requires landlords that have commercial properties to be inspected. I'm talking about commercial, not residential. Okay, and I only ask that question again, I'm not gonna talk about the ordinance that you're in choose for discussion, but a lot of what's going on in that particular thing that we're gonna discuss, it's infrastructure related, it's real estate related, et cetera. So, you might wanna think about that between now and the next meeting.
Miss Kelly, I believe there's, there's a plan that is on for, that's to converge to commercial of buildings and facilities. I don't know if that, you know, if that answers your question, but that is.
No, that does not answer my question. Okay, so what question are you asking? Okay, so, in order to sell a house, unless you're selling it as is and it's stipulated, you have to have everything up to code. The screens have to be in the windows, blah, blah, blah. There's a whole list. And it would be on the seller, seller's responsibility to pay for that for the sale to go through, unless the buyer agrees otherwise. So, when, you know, since you're getting into how to recruit businesses and train people to go into business and that kind of thing, I was simply asking, is there an ordinance in place? When these people have, say, half of their life to go into business, is there an ordinance in place, so when they rent that commercial property to fulfill whatever vision they have for their business, are they gonna be faced with a building that's not up to code, and they are not financially prepared for those things? And commercial properties that are listed or inside of the town of Bogalusa should also include registration with city hall so you can keep up to it. Thank you.
Hey, Miss Kelly, when you were renting a commercial building from anyone, you do know that they do have to go through an inspection, a health inspection, and someone does have to come out before your business can be even certified, before you open it.
Has to be like.
Right, so all that is in place for the state of Louisiana.
Okay, but is it being enforced? This needs to be landlord, commercial tenant specific. You can't tell me that all the buildings on Columbia Street are, that are occupied by a rancher, and they're paying money every month, is up to code, because that's completely incorrect.
Well, that would follow our code enforcement, but that wasn't the question you actually asked. We have a warrant. Technologists say that even if it's an ordinance in place or not, they still have to go through an inspection before they can open, prior to opening day.
The tenant that's occupying the commercial business, or renting the commercial property, has to go through an inspection?
Yes, ma'am.
And they look at the electrical, and they look at the, they look at the windows and all that good stuff, right?
Washington Parish Government handles, I see where this is going. Washington Parish Government handles, we have a, what's called Cooperative Endeavor. Because most of the people who rent out on the left field, that's the room, it's one of the city and parish. So, that Cooperative Endeavor room, it goes back several years. It's been over at the same city. About seventy-eight thousand dollars a year, it utilizes parish taxes. It's paid at our dollar stores and loan markets, okay? And it utilizes our city money board to allow the parish building inspector to come to, master builder inspector, to come in here and inspect the electrical and the plumbing of that building before it can open. And I happen to know, one of the builders on this street, and he did make them go a couple of different times. I was sitting a few years ago, and he had revitalization of this street. You know, I don't get myself in no kind of legal trap, okay? But the thing is that revitalization was several years ago. It was on this Friday. And they made him fix whatever electrical problem before that business could open. I remember that.
Do you get a report as the city council for Bogalusa from the parish government showing what new business has been inspected and passed, and if there's flaws, they are advised, so you can enforce the fixing?
We have never seen a business license for anything. Now, we can ask, we can ask that, we have never seen a business license for anything.
I was struggling there.
And from, and from a, a business perspective, um, I did have the experience of, um, where someone actually came out and what they typically do, the owner of the building, you know, gives him the, um, the inspection report to let them know what needs to be fixed itself before, um, this tenant, um, can rent a building. So, and that was, um, roughly two years back.
Well, I think you also need to consider that, I'm not accusing anyone. Um, money change is hands under the table readily. And permits can be penciled with, inspections can be penciled with, there's a lot of stuff that can be penciled with. That's why I asked specifically about the ordinance that you all control. I have businesses here in Bogalusa and I can tell you some stories that would make your teeth turn and grow.
Oh, we don't have a lot of time, but, um, you share. I'll get the, we share, they can share.
Thank you.
Ms. Lee, before you go, um, you, you made reference about, um, getting documentation about revenue commitment, commitment for the Mardi Gras. I, I asked for that, I'm guessing six weeks ago. I said, I gotta go, we got some estimates on it. I forward ask how much it costs to make it. The chief was here, assistant chief was here, I knew I wanted to answer that very quick, how much it costs to have a Mardi Gras at that? If they could just answer it.
It, it costs just a police department between thirty-five and forty thousand dollars.
And it costs the cities, it costs public works about thirty thousand.
I just thought it would be a lot higher than that because you have to register some detail and extra staff and all that good stuff. And I believe also that the price.
Well, he, he's just talking about, they were, um, he's talking about probably total sixty thousand dollars to put on a Mardi Gras.
Alright, alright, we need to. That also comes out of our operating budget.
Right.
So, you know, we just can't keep paying it for forty thousand dollars for everybody to have their time.
Well, that's kinda why I suggested it because to avoid opposition at the next meeting, they wanna do something like that. So a lot of people are gonna complain about the increase in fees, that was the only point.
Also, uh, the, uh, men that have figures, they know what we're having.
Correct.
So, you know, they shouldn't get up for that, like they don't know how much money that poses for our speakers.
Well, it's like the letter that went on public record, you know, he said there's an increase in the sales tax case. Well, you know, people party during Mardi Gras, they're not shopping at CVS. Just saying. Thank you.
Anyway, a week ago, that was one, like I said, a whole time hall meetings, but, uh, and the state already calls our meetings, time hall meetings.
And I also say, I believe when we discussed this at the next meeting, the police department has included, uh, their stats. Uh, it should, it should be in, uh, the pack that was passed out, but they, they have their stats, how much money that, uh,
Alright. As president of the city council, I'm asking to make sure that's have accurate figures. Uh, Mr. Trebleon has already presented us with some figures. Uh, fair side, uh, Mr. Bailey, if you could provide how much sales tax revenue we bring in that one day? They're wanting to know that, so we need to know, who gives the position on twenty-four or twenty-three? Uh, I believe the twenty-four, we can provide that. And then you provide your public works, how much it costs in nine hours, how many?
Yeah, we, we're split up from, uh, the truck to barricades, to whatever we do.
Right.
I do that and then I, I know how much it costs. We're around thirty grand off the bat and then, then I, I'm telling them good, so it's no cheat. I can give you two thousand dollars every year if I have to barricade this period.
And we're on public records request, the, uh, information across the ways. So if they're watching tonight, uh, it quickly give us that figure too for cleanup? Cause I think we use them to clean up my own trucks. So, alright, moving along, so we know what we need. We need the financial figures for twenty-twenty-four, just right one back. Just a estimate and then your, your light rod, barricades, what kind of public works? So the public can actually see how much the freight actually costs. If we're all in agreement? Alright, moving along. Uh, I think we're on, Mr. Joe Hill. You have two minutes, please state your name and address for record.
Good afternoon. Joe Miller, five thirty-two thousand three. I want to publicly apologize for my action on last week. Um, I always, I don't apologize to tell you the truth and apologize for the facts. But I did that myself, get carried away on something that's, that's actually happened. And, uh, missing the best actions that's going on. And I don't think the mayor is not here like, look, I didn't appear for ten years or more. I'm the last administration being given the truth, the training or whatever. And the family, the mayor, he didn't say I had trained. When it was raining that day, the guys was working on it and they left before they finished the job. I'm quite sure they come back after the question of the mayor. But, uh, I guess if I didn't stand anything, I need you to ask me the statement you made. Why don't I get up here and pull forth a lot of endings by the city council like I did for the mayor? Let's just see on the other leaf when I'm here, why I don't? Because I see things, I, I don't see, I don't talk all the time, but I sit back and study things and I see a lot that's going on. And Mr. Mark actually done putting a barricade up down that street. It's the local, I'm not gonna be, it's in your district, you don't tell them more about it, then it's something, it's something. But anyhow, I just got to say this and I got some stuff. I don't know my best station because I was, um, took advantage of my mentor, the city council. And I, 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 thank you.
Alright, next, we have Mr. uh, Mr. Faith Farrell. Mr. Farrell, we got his state and name and address and we have two minutes after that.
Faith Farrell, eighteen thirty-one, D W. Mr. Patterson, I apologize for people trying to blame you for the, the war on that sewer system that we have here in Bogalusa. We got many war on that things in Bogalusa. But people want to put the blame on this administration, which I think they wrong. These pipes is probably over, over fifty years old, I don't know. So anything that were out, so don't, don't blame the city administration for the pipe busting and generating a war on that. They're, they're ninety years old, they ninety? Okay, well, you can expect something to break down, so we should stop fighting this system for something that didn't come down. Let's get everybody who is due. Stop all these, uh, uh, kind of putting blame on people that shouldn't put on people. And another thing, uh, I like to say one thing about this cleanup. I've been complaining to you council for many years about the nineteen hundred block of DeWitt? And, no, eighteen hundred block of DeWitt and nineteen hundred block of Davenport. We have four houses on Davenport need to be cleaned up. I am sitting tired looking at it. I'm asking you councilmen at large, my councilman, Miss Chandler, will you all get with your COVID enforcement office and city, what can be taken care of? About this bad property that need to be cleaned up? And on DeWitt? You got another friend, y'all send up a call name, but I don't call name. You got another friend on the house on the corner, DeWitt and Soul Drive. He don't hit that, but he do not clean it up. He got another house on Davenport in the nineteen hundred block, he do not clean it up. If he not gonna clean it up, I have facility to take it over. Because I have facility to connect it. So we need to get all these people and, and charter. Cause little friends are getting asked to be in this part a million times through two other administration and he doesn't do it, just don't do it. So let's get together, you all, and go check on Mr. Farrell. Please. Thank you.
We have Reverend Keith Merrill. And that's the title of the, uh, Reverend Merrill, we have two minutes, please state your name and address.
My name is Keith Merrill Blackress in the nine twenty-five East Fourth Street apartment, seventy in Bogalusa. I'm gonna be brief on, touch on, uh, three things briefly. First of all, I'd like to thank the mayor as of today, October the first. Today is October the first, right? Okay. Few months ago, he made a statement, uh, Facebook that as of October the first that landlords will have to go through the city before they can rent their property out to someone. And I commend the mayor on that because we do have landlords that try to take advantage of people. But we glad that we have someone that's in our height, that's above them. That's, that's gonna hold them accountable. And then we have someone that's above the mayor, that's gonna hold all of us accountable. My second point. Uh, the second thing I have. We have three-three, six up here, right? What, what happens if there's a tie? Who would break the tie?
Well, we won't pay.
Okay, we won't pay, so I'm gonna say this. I love Mr. Kelly, so I went to church with him, he's a great man. And the worst happened, you know? But yeah, I think we just wanna build that slot until it comes together. Y'all hear what I'm saying? We might find someone that can volunteer. Don't take it one way cause he needed, cause he's sick. But we can find someone that might can volunteer. Although legally can do that or not, by the case, but it, it would hurt the city.
I think, uh, mayor, um, Mr. Kenny and the council, everyone's a way to addition. Everybody trying to make sure to figure out what's, what's gonna take place next. He know what he gotta do. And I just think it's kinda insensitive to speak on his name tonight. We're working on it, he knows, he, he fight for his life as well, but he know he gotta do and things will be done here real sharp.
Right.
So just let that be.
Okay, but I'm, I'm saying that if, uh, if this a three-to-three tie, who would break the tie? I'm talking about city business that has to go on.
Yeah, or if something the pastor has to be for.
Because if I pass through the church, if something happened to me, the church business still has to go on. I'm not there for that, the city didn't stop.
This call just for a second. City charter states four up or down. There will never be history of the city of Bogalusa having a tie. Now, with the Robert's Rules of Order, they can be a tie. But in the case that we vote here, it's four up or down. Four up to pass something, four down to pass something. That's why I have a quorum of five people.
So it's four up or four down?
Four up, four down. It does not matter if Mr. Kelly shows up. Or if some, another council person's out, but it has to be five council people adding to the, to hold a meeting, the Bogalusa city council meeting. This is come before us, after us, in fifty years from now, it has to be four, there has to be a quorum of five councils minimum.
Okay. Hey, if you ask somebody, I say I'm gonna bring it to you, but, um, city business still has to go on.
Yes, go ahead.
No, if I pass the church and I get sick, it still has to go on.
Twenty-four seconds.
Oh, uh, my, my next one, my last. We need for people to stop getting up here being phony. You get on the news talking about Bogalusa look bad, y'all look bad. But then you get up here, you take up for the same people who you was talking about look bad on the news. So we don't be all that face stuff, but that makes people not have no confidence in you. It makes you look weak as a legal or a woman as a legal. So be straightforward, don't be nothing at all.
Thank you, God. Alright. Alright, um, now we have, uh, magistrate remarks, anyone from the administration wish to speak?
I do.
Go ahead.
I just, I wanna clarify completely on the record so everyone understands that, and this isn't politics, I've said this before to council of everybody. This sewer system is nine years old. It has almost nine hundred, I said, listen, nine hundred miles of sewer pipe from four X to twelve X to twenty-four. A lot of it's terracotta. In older years, they done some pre-furishing on a lot of it, it's what they can. But it didn't, and then we have sixty-three filtration stations scattered out throughout Bogalusa, echoed out sewer waste from all neighborhoods that goes to station three, station fourteen. Those two stations then send, help to get to the treatment plant where it's treated. Station three is on a big pump we have to rent because that, all the pumps are out. Station fourteen is on a big major pump. Only one pump run in there and then we have both sewer screws down. Those sewer screws were put in in two thousand. It's twenty-four years been ran twenty-four seven. We just came in twenty-one months ago. So somebody did all weird, something happened. I know this mayor didn't cause the eclipse. He didn't cause the war in Iraq. But I'm gonna tell you this, and he sure didn't wear out this, all this equipment and what he didn't care of. But it, it take, it took a long time for it to get like this. And what I'm saying is, we're, we're working on it, we're fixing it, we're getting on top of it. And citizens and we're working with the city council, they're very, very rich, they will take it. And we're gonna get it fixed, we're gonna get it done, but it didn't happen overnight and it's not gonna be fixed overnight. Thank you.
Thank you, any one else from the administration? I actually, as I move on over to, uh, council remarks, we're gonna start with the councilwoman and she'll attend.
Good evening, I just had a few things tonight. Um, first thing, I'd like to thank the, um, Be Not Away for coming today. Uh, we really appreciate all the hard work and dedication in helping our community that you've done throughout the years and we're very thankful that you're back. Uh, I'd like to piggyback on what Ms. Carter was saying about children. I noticed the other morning, early in the morning, it's about six, still dark, our time has not changed. There are children at the bus stops at six o'clock in the dark. So please be mindful of that when you're going back and forth to work or wherever you may be going earlier in the morning. There are children waiting for the bus at that time, so just be aware. Um, last, please pray for the people that have been affected by this hurricane hurricane. The pictures and videos that are coming out from all the states that have been affected, the destruction is just indescribable. So please put these people in your prayers. Have a good night, thank you.
Councilwoman, Mayor Moss, you have it?
I would like to take the time to thank everybody for coming out, just thank you for your patience with us. And as, um, President Mark already said, it is, um, very valid that we do need to have a city town hall meeting to discuss some of the issues the citizens may have. Um, so it won't take up so much of the business, um, in for our business council meetings. Um, this past Saturday, Bethlehem Baptist Church, um, was able to donate food to the citizens. Um, I just wanna thank everybody for coming out for setting harvest and for, um, the Bethlehem members who did a wonderful job of keeping everything aesthetic. Um, also tomorrow, Washington Parish, um, flag ceremony will be held here at city hall for ten AM. We'll welcome everyone to come out to participate. Um, also congratulations to all of the kings and queens, um, the fair queens, as well as the homecoming court. Um, queen, wanna, um, congratulate those young ladies. Um, thank you to Ms. Rhonda, um, Arin Bay for her after school program. She's doing a wonderful job in the community with helping kids with after school. To the city workers, um, thank you for filling, um, some of the pockets who are in the city. I know that y'all have a list, yay, long, but I, um, just wanna thank you. Thank the, um, city workers for, um, doing the job that are done thus far. To Ms. Sarah Spies, um, I was a community worker and banker in her community for passing our computer, um, computers to the community kids. Also, we're asking for donations at the Washington Parish Pregnancy Center located on Avenue L. And also Brilliant Minds has a new location, they have recently moved to, um, Avenue L and they're asking for donations as well. Um, let's remember to eat and shop locally, we have so many restaurants that are closing and so many businesses. So as we love our city, we don't wanna see any more shut down, so let's just remember to eat and shop locally. Remember to keep Mr. Kenny, um, in prayers and his family at this time. I wanna thank the police department as well as the fire department for a job well done. Um, low visibility up on the streets, as well as today at my church, they, um, came out and we had a, I don't even know how long for an elevator, but I just wanna thank you guys. but I just wanna thank you guys and ladies for coming out to tend to the alligator. Also, forever takes a village, Ms. Khalil Daniels, they're recognizing National Domestic Violence Month as well as breast cancer awareness. Let's remember to treat each other kindly and nice. And I would just have to speak on some concerns that came to the podium that's concerning me. I have no reason to lie on anyone. I always try to help anyone to the best of my ability. And what I'll do for the next meeting is have one of the local landlords to come speak on this matter that has been drawn out. I'm not gonna apologize for my actions on last week because I don't need one lying on me for all wrongs. And we all can just learn to tell the truth. Also, Mr. Patterson, Charlie Bar, there was the tree that was cut down, those limbs are still there to the side. We can please get those removed thoroughly.
What is it?
On Charlie Bar, the tree that I talked to you about, the limbs are there now. We'll give you the address again. Yes, sir, could you just please make sure, thank you, make that done, because that's been ongoing. And I do know that your list is yay long, and I just wanna thank you for every time that I call you. You do address the issues they have from the concerned citizens.
We're trying to get a contractor that will haul it off for the whole town.
Okay, okay.
What happens is some of these guys, they'll cut it down, they'll do this, but then we got time to get to it, to get to it. Yeah, we'll get to it tomorrow.
Okay, thank you. And to Mr. Roberts, I wanna thank you for as well, for getting up and speaking a lot of time. The council does know behind the scene what's going on, so we're not gonna put anybody wrong. Mr. Patterson has spoken, hopefully those issues will be addressed. But I do confess that you didn't take someone's word, you actually got me a rehooked guy out to see the things for yourself. So that way, people won't say you're just taking other person's words, or you've been bought or paid to do anything that you feel is right for the citizens. And on that note, I would just like to thank everybody for coming out, we do have fair coming up. Let's be safe, let's look out for everyone, and let's remember to check on your neighbors. Remember the bereaved families at this time, the mayor, let's keep his family lifted up in prayer. His grandmother was buried this weekend, so it's a lot going on, you know, we're blessed to be alive. And even myself, I have some words to look over foolishness. Excuse me, but I just wanna thank y'all for coming out.
Councilwoman, Gloria Case.
I just wanna thank everybody for coming out tonight, for getting everybody's attention on tonight. There is a lot going on here within the city of Bogalusa. Keep us in good quarters, I want to send out prayers to our bereaved families, some of them missing early, some of the lost. Tomorrow's family, the mayor's grandparent, grandmother, as well as to the petty family, keep those families in prayers. Also, our sick and shutting, just keep them in our prayers as well. I did want to also thank the public works department, they work very hard. I'm telling you that they are, there was a stop sign, you notice the stop sign over on Virginia? And Montgomery, it was covered and they were out there and they cleared the land off a bit too. So I appreciate them for doing that, Mr. Morris, he been acting that. Thanks to Mr. Patterson as well. Thank you to our fire department, our fire department was right on yesterday, there was a brief fire on May. And I did speak with the chief and he dispatched one, I think it was someone that got up there, but that, there was, there was nothing. There was, I'm sorry, there was actually damage out of Willamette Avenue. I would also like to say, thanks to our police department, they, they're in route, anytime you call them, they're in route. And they will render any help that's needed throughout the city. I wanna thank you everyone for coming out to finance meeting on the twenty-sixth, just to share with you a little bit. We had kind of full house at finance meeting. There has been a bill that was passed, HB one oh three bill, which requires the, uh, requires the council as well as the communities of the council to be, uh, to be videotaped, livestreamed. And with that being said, I just wanna put out there, share that we were not in violation. I did talk to the legislators on that, and so my report to you brought to my attention that if there is a technical difficulty during a meeting and cannot be livestreamed, you're not in violation. So I thank, I thank them for sharing that information. Again, Mr. Bailey did update our phone report as well as, um, we talked a bit about our general revenues, general expenditures. The port chief will be getting a updated copy to us on that. And hopefully we have any people that we voted in place that will help us well, that's we will be voting on that on the, on the, uh, the financial. So with that being said, and with the information from the financial, hopefully we get everything in order. And finally, I would like to say, I talked to Mr. Patterson briefly, we talked briefly on, and I sent an email to him in reference to the, uh, the stats, the plan of action for the pump schools in the city of Bogalusa. I did send him that last year, just gonna give you some of the questions, and he'll be responding to it. I did ask which schools are in need of, uh, need repair? What are the target areas? What is the total cost of these projects? And what is the source of funding of the American Rescue Plan? And I know that we do have some, we will have some, some funding in place. He had mentioned the mayor's group has gone to DC to have funding in place. We did have an HB two bill that had funding in place for us, and we could perhaps get, uh, be reached from the non-clinics, maybe for one day, we can get that, those funds that will help us to, uh, to repair the, uh, the schools and Mr.?
Yeah, Mr. Case, uh, just to show y'all what we're dealing with. One screw, one screw box over about a million dollars. We got rich too. The list station together, um, so, I mean, it's, and it's not like we just sit, you know, we don't, oh, we get it when we get it. I mean, Bogalusa don't have more ready than that. So when we, when we have to go, we can fix a lot of things, replace, replace pumps or list stations. But we fix what we can inside our budget for that year. But we have to rely on grants from DQ, from DC, and to mayor's, he's got something coming. And that's where we're at with that, but that's why it's taking so long. Like I said, it's take a long time for this stuff to get to where it's at. You can't just get that kind of money that quick, you know? But that's where we're at, I'll get the numbers to you just then.
Okay, thank you, and thank you everyone, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
First of all, I want to say good evening, I'm not gonna attract everyone else to see at all. This is October, this is breast cancer month, and, uh, let's just put a big note and show support for us. I also want to thank and congratulate Vina Way.
Thank you, councilwoman, councilwoman. Okay, I want to thank everyone for showing, coming tonight. I want to commend y'all, uh, we were both very proud and grateful to the public. And also thank y'all for your for expression tonight. We want to thank the police department, uh, thank y'all very much for all we do, for spending any long hours, any shields. And thank you for all that you do, fire department, and everybody out here tonight. And thank you for maybe more than just put out fires. And I very appreciate it, because my work is a great people and bright speaking people, I promise you that. We do a lot of work, public works, thank you very much. I see a lot of work, and especially over here in District E, Brookside, I guess a lot come here, I saw a picture of them piles and all. And I know y'all working on something that, as you heard tonight, I don't know what happened to me, the millers, uh, what word about this barricade? This barricade that you put up, Adams and, what was that, Adams and Robertson? I think, yeah, Adams and Robertson, that's that old closeout bridge on both sides. It's trying to, that's for safety issue, to keep people from going off in there. But somebody, and there was a barricade collapsed there that disappeared, I did see it one day. So I don't know what happened to it. So, but it's been, it's been a while since I checked on it, honestly. Uh, so we do need to put something over there. I want to thank public works for all you did out, and Mr. Bailey, thank y'all very much, he's hard work. Working on the twenty-five budget, twenty twenty-five budget, uh, working on the closeouts for twenty twenty-two. It's very close to be closed out, uh, and so that will get us some figures within our twenty twenty-five budget. So there's a lot we need to work on. I did hear a lot of what y'all said, Mr. Farrell, Mr. Kelly, rest of y'all. I did hear a lot about what you're saying and saying. And planning is on it, I was on it, and believe it or not, there's people watching now with this whole million appointments on it. When I was there, a long time ago, they watch it and they put their input, uh, one couple of them are rolling it out. And the tiny home issue has been an issue for a long time, and didn't start today. And I think there's one more thing we need to add to this, that the tiny homes do have two different types of, when you're using one of those buildings, there's one to use for storage and one for hattable, hattable. That builds by the wind rating. My biggest fear is, is a rollover, and I want to make sure the citizens are safe. And we are looking at something in their, in the media, making sure everything is tied down. Because even in the flood, I seen some of the, uh, uh, storage sheds went off. And I think you've probably seen that, we saw that in twenty-sixth inventory. So with enough fire said, as you already see, next council meeting is gonna be interesting. So thank y'all for coming tonight, next council meeting, one city, we'll go to two hour session. Right here at five thirty, don't forget to attend five hours tomorrow. And also, for everything, we just been paying, and, uh, council meeting will be at the council of eight, sixteen AM, Thursday night. This Dixon, Nancy, say that, thank y'all very much, see you tomorrow.